I would like to call the meeting of the Dutch County IDA to order. Jasmine, would you please take attendance?
Yeah.
Here.
Mark Warren.
Yeah.
Kathy Bauer.
Here.
Amy Von Deere.
Here.
James DeCun.
Here.
Don Sagrano.
Here.
Al Correia.
Okay, I just want to mention to those who are in attendance by Zoom that we had some technical difficulties with our normal camera setup. So we are using a laptop camera and microphone to record the meeting. So I apologize in advance if the sound quality is a little bit poorer than usual. Conflict of interest disclosures, does anybody have a conflict that they're aware of with anything that's on our agenda now? Don Sagrano?
Chairman, I have a conflict for nine A and nine B.
Okay.
My wife and I recently relocated in the Eastdale complex.
Okay.
Right for.
All right. So we will recuse you during those discussions. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to disclose now? Okay, if something comes up during the meeting, please let us know and we'll recuse you from that discussion. Group of meeting notice, Sarah, I would assume it's done?
Yes, on February 2nd.
Okay, any bills in communications?
Yeah.
Okay, approval of minutes of January 11th, we have those within the packet. Did anybody have any corrections or modifications or questions about the minutes? If not, I will take a motion to approve them.
I'll read that one again.
Thank you Kathy, and if somebody would be willing to second them?
I'll second.
Thank you. Amy? Okay Jasmine, could you please take a vote?
I'm sorry, Leanne.
In favor.
James DeCun.
Approved.
Amy Von Deere.
Approved.
Kathy Bauer.
Approved.
Mark Warren.
Approved.
Approved. Okay, Jean, is she going to have a report on the trajectory?
Yes, so.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Looking at the balance sheet, the cash is 2.3 million. Nothing else really, we have receivables just for the compliance fees. Looking at the profit and loss, the total income is 26,000 to a budgeted income of 447,000. For unfavorable to revenue for 421,000. Expenses are 215,000 to a budget of 690,000 for a favorable to the budget of 475,000. We have a net loss of 188,000 to a budgeted net loss of 243,000 favorable to budget by 55,000. We had the first payment for the Duchess Tourism of 212,500. Otherwise, it's pretty new.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? I would assume that the cash difference and of course the offsetting expense difference is some type of a timing issue?
Yes.
Okay, anybody have any questions? All right, we do not have to approve those, that was for our information. All right. Thank you. Okay, reports at committees, are there any committee reports?
Yeah.
Okay, unfinished business?
Nope.
Okay, new business. So, Don Sagrano will have to ask you to step out and we'll ask the Eastdale folks to come in.
Okay. So we're having technical issues. I don't have upside down.
Hi folks.
Hello.
We're having some.
So, yeah, so we're having technical issues with our camera, so if you can kind of stand where Malane is so that you can be on this camera here.
So we don't have to be necessarily on the camera, if you want to point it for his presentation, that would be fine. There we go.
Could I put the?
Okay, perfect. Okay. And Joe, maybe you could introduce the person that's with you.
Sorry, I'm practicing well, once you get set up. Thank you very much. You don't need these on, right?
We can turn, yeah.
There. Our attorneys are being listed. Okay, sorry folks.
That's okay.
Okay. Morning.
Morning. Joe Kretschow. This is Rebecca. And Rebecca is yet another female-owned business coming to Eastdale Avenue. So we're very excited about that, we have many. And she just adds to the great group that we already have. So her proposal here, and obviously we're pointing you for approval, is for 23 Eastdale Avenue LLC. So 23 Eastdale Avenue is right on the corner, so put in perspective, the traffic light is here and Ross's is right here. All right, so this is on the south side of the project. And as you can see, that this building and this building are off, this building is not as of right now. So it is a 5,522 square foot building, it's a kind of what's called a typical Eastdale Avenue building where you have commercial downstairs and you have apartments upstairs for which there is three. As you can see, the architecture is very similar to the rest of Eastdale. You know, we constantly work on the whole vernacular piece to try to get the colors right and the feel right. We don't want it all to match, but we wanted to at least, you know, complement each other. So the refillery, which I'm going to let Rebecca talk about, is a zero-waste storehouse. And I'll let her get into a little bit more about it and then we can answer some other questions.
Yeah, so in the concept of zero waste, what we'll be offering is non-packaged or diet-free products. So I will have a selection of non-perishable food items along with everyday household items and personal care. And then I will have a small refrigeration selection of perishable items, so those local dairies. So like eggs, milk, and just, you know, grab and go. Things that customers can come in and grab them to go rather than having to come in. And then if you're not familiar with the concept, so we're encouraging our customers to bring their own refillable container. So they'll come in and fill up as little or as much as they need. And then you pay by what you purchase, so by the ounce. And then we're also, well, I'm also looking to have a tap system. So with this tap system, it's similar to the bulk items. But we'll have specialty local beers and wines, so people can bring in their own growlers or wine bottle to fill up like that also.
So the types of items in the store are?
Everything from nuts, granolas, candies, cereals, what else? Dried fruits, specialty fees, coffees, and I'm also looking to have both peanut butter, so you can, you know, grind your own peanut butter, honeys and syrups.
And then like typical, like rice and beans?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, all like that dry, how many items Rebecca total?
Over at least like 250.
So is 5,000 square feet? Is that it?
The building is, the actual space, I think it's a little over 2,700.
Okay.
Correct. On the ground floor.
I got it.
Right.
Questions?
Just have a full comment, because you know, it's interesting to me, the choice of locating parking when you're doing a development. And that your parking is to the rear and that maintains the visual aspect and the walkability of the front. And I know so many people of developers avoid that, but I'm glad you brought it.
No, thank you. Taking that. To get that true, Mark, to get that true mainstream walkable experience, we have to keep the park in as hidden as possible. Sometimes it's a little tough, but we get there. And because of the volume that we're seeing, we didn't come back in front of you because we just paid the tax and did what we had to do on it. Because we were running very short on the north side. So we bought the neighbor's land, we moved our retention ponds to that piece of property. And we built 63 more spots because of the volume that was there with the existing north side real estate. And then, you know, being filled and with royalties coming, at those peak times of the day, we were really having a lot of trouble. So we hit the bullet and we did it. And Mr. Chairman, you had asked me last time and I didn't have an answer for you, so I did the research. So in the winter, on an average day, there's 176 FTEs, 176 employees currently there today. Not on Mondays, Mondays are like 118.
You're talking about in the Eastdale.
Insofar, not what we have coming, just what's there today. So we're running, call it 175 employees. I know, I saw a comment and one of the comments from the public that I read, that there was 25 or so employees. I just want to make sure everybody on the board understood and the public knew where we are.
Thank you. Is that, does that include your staff?
I'm sorry?
Your office is there, right?
My office is there. Correct, that's maintenance people, we, our office doesn't have that many people, we only have about 14 in the office every day. The maintenance people are included in that, there's 13 people. And then the rest are all from.
Rebecca, do you have any estimates as to what percentage of your business will come from residents? Or are you planning on what percentage would be from residents versus visitors, or does it not give that detail?
I do have a percentage. I want to say, for the most part, majority of my customers will be residents. So I'm kind of tailoring towards that also, because I know that Eastdale was looking for something where their, our residents can go and grab just like, you know, rather than getting in the car and going down the streets Adams or Stop, Stop and Shop or whoever too, so. Yeah.
So these are, I mean, this is a project similar to other ones that we have approved, Sarah, why don't you just real quickly explain how that works, just to make sure that?
Yeah, so, so way back when, when MHTC was first induced and approved, the board approved the benefits to MHTC. Knowing that MHTC will be coming to the board to reallocate these benefits to different phases. When the phase itself, when MHTC is not the majority owner of that particular phase. So this morning, in 23 Eastdale, Rebecca is here to request a reallocation of previously approved benefits in the form of mortgage tax, sales tax exemptions, and the pilot when that begins. And as they explained, first for commercial, we were residential.
So are there any other questions from the board about this project? Okay, if not, if a board member will be willing to make a motion to approve the final resolution for this project?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you Amy, Mark is seconded, thank you. Okay Jasmine, would you please take a roll call vote on the vote?
James DeCun.
Approved.
Amy Von Deere.
Approved.
Kathy Bauer.
Approved.
Mark Warren.
Approved.
Approved. So thank you very much and good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then one last thing is, we did hold a public hearing last Friday. We had no members in the public attend, but we did receive written comments from the board to the board.
Yes.
Which we also know.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want to send the board back?
Yeah.
These troublemakers.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are now going to have a presentation involving MHTC and Bunz Burger and Barboo.
Barboo. Barboo. Barboo.
Dangerous.
Sean and Ryan. So, Don, theater or bieter? Bieter. Theater and Ryan Bieter and Sean. Sure.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Morning. Well, this time John, we're just talking about this. Okay, that's fine. Morning.
Sarah, you want to make your comments?
Yeah, so. Similar to the project, we just saw with 23, 32 Eastdale Avenue is asking for approval for the reallocation of benefits that were previously approved for MHTC. These are in the form of a mortgage tax exemption, sales tax exemption, and a pilot. The project consists of first for commercial and then three residential units above. The public hearing was held last Friday on February 3rd. The transcript, there were no members of the public present, but the written transcript and written comments were forwarded to the board. We have this morning Ryan Bieter and Sean Weeks, the owners of Bunz Burgers and Barboo.
So thank you, as Sarah said, this is 32 Eastdale Avenue, not 23. It is a 8,179 square foot building, two-story. We're very excited for multiple reasons to have these gentlemen join us at Eastdale. The demand for a really well-done bar atmosphere has been huge for the public as well as people at Eastdale. And these are definitely the most experienced professionals to do it. And right now, they own three other Bunz Burgers locations and they can talk about that. And it's just a great atmosphere, we're excited to have. This will complete our north end Main Street, right at the corner, practically. So from the refillery, which you just met Rebecca, she's over here, so it's catty corner across over. Really phenomenal architecture, we put a lot of time into it. Ryan is from New Orleans and we really spent quite a bit of effort trying to get that layer of what we wanted to have. The building and the vernacular of that building to really tell a story of what was inside. So it'll have, you know, natural gas lamps outside like you would see in, you know, New Orleans or something, in stucco exterior. Very large, huge windows with curved top shutters, so you can really start to get a feel of what the building's going to be like. And this is your Route 44 view. And this is from Eastdale Avenue. So if you're standing in the, you know, over at Ross's or the utensil store, this is kind of your view. And if you've been there, this is our sister buildings, right? We have been in front of you for both of those previously. This steel arch works going up in a couple of weeks and these buildings are now, this is open, Chakra Bowls is open and Sky Studios will open in a matter of a couple of weeks. Homeless is coming along, but you can see where this corner would be the Bunz Burgers and this building here is going to be Barboo. You guys want to explain a little bit more?
Ah, sure, thank you Joe. Good morning, thank you all for having us. Yeah, Bunz Burgers, we started seven years ago as an opportunity for ourselves to go into business for ourselves, never with the intention of what it has become. We feel very fortunate that we've had, you know, great response from the public. And so we expanded a couple of times over the, over that seven-year period. The last time, right, right before COVID hit, and so that was the most interesting expansion we did, a little scary. But for that, we do local grass-fed burgers, we do, we make our own fries, milkshakes, we offer chicken sandwiches, veggie options as well. If you've ever been and you kind of know some of this, if you haven't. Why not? We do have, what's called Bunz Sauce, thanks. That, yeah, it's our signature sauce, it's kind of become a thing and a hit, we package it and bottle it ourselves now. And it's hard for us to keep it in stock. But, so that's all, you know, the fun stuff that we get to do on a daily basis with that. When we met with Joe originally, we were only thinking buns and then he talked about the extra space in the building that would be left over. And, you know, we just casual conversations, he kept mentioning how, you know, the people at Eastdale were looking for nightlife. Moderate nightlife, nothing wild. So John and I kind of put our heads together and we've always talked about doing other ventures in the culinary realm. And so we thought, why would we let somebody else take this opportunity when we could possibly do it ourselves? Let's come up with an idea, so we came up with the idea for Barboo. Barboo is a Cajun-French word for catfish. Again, I grew up in Louisiana, lived there until I was in my early twenties. And then moved here to go to culinary school, that's why I'm a transplant here. Liked the area a lot, so I stayed in the Hudson Valley, raised my two kids here. And Barboo will be cocktail and bar-themed, but also with Cajun, New Orleans-style, small plates and food. So that's something we feel is unique to the area that they don't have. We feel it can be executed correctly because, you know, Sean's been to Louisiana quite a few times now and he really has immersed himself in southern food. So he really enjoys that aspect as well. So we're, we're going to, we're looking forward to the design of the menu and doing all of that. But, you know, we really think it will be something different that will not only bring people just for beer and wine and cocktails, but for the food as well. And that's what we really want to do and offer that moderate nightlife for the people who live there and others as well, if they'd like to come. So for us, that's exciting, you know, when we started talking about doing this project, we didn't, you know, we didn't, obviously, just try to put your mind around the whole scope of this and doing two restaurants at one time was a lot. Then Joe explained to us the IDA process and how that's a big benefit. So we didn't think it would be possible to do this without the support of the IDA. And then to also try to be owners of the building and space as well was something that we did, would be a challenge that we didn't thought would be possible without, you know, the assistance of the IDA benefits. So we are very excited about this project, we really look forward to the next year, you know, it's going to be busy and hectic. But, you know, we see, you can see something so vivid in your mind that you really think what an exciting opportunity it's going to be. So I don't know if Sean wants to add anything on.
I covered everything there.
Are you going to share a kitchen or is it going to be two separate?
There'll be two separate kitchens, you know, we designed it to where, we thought originally about possibly doing a shared kitchen and then we thought about the possible complications with that as well, just from, because Bunz has its kind of, it's a set entity and has its own hours and operating. So we want everything to kind of stay similar and that, and we didn't want access to that side of the restaurant while it's closed technically. And so we just kind of made it, you know, let's, we have the space, let's do two smaller kitchens and make it work.
We do share, can I note one question? We do share on common area. Right? So instead of having two different groups of bathrooms, smaller, we put bigger, larger gang bathrooms here. So you can see here's Bunz, right? And this is probably about the size or a little bigger than most of your Bunz stores.
Yeah, very, very.
And then this is Barboo and this, so you have a kitchen here and you have a kitchen here, okay? So open bar, right here, right? So this is a private bar that is within Barboo, which is a really great and needed concept for the area. So you have, you know, four couples or whatever, go out to dinner, anyone, or a small gathering, they can actually reserve this and use this bar. So that's kind of the layout, but the common core is right here for in and out in the bathrooms.
Any questions for any board members? What's your timeframe?
We are shooting for the end of this year, hopefully fall, early, late fall, early, early winter, construction and all that stuff. Their schedule was presented to us by August-ish. And so, yeah, usually about a, Bunz, we know the build up's pretty quick, once it's delivered, the way it's, you know, delivered and wiped out, the setup's fairly simple. It's very just kind of aesthetic. Yeah, the aesthetic's simple, there's nothing overly complicated to set up, we've done, we've, you know, built up Bunz in two months before. So that, that is our plan, is to get Bunz up and going because it's a known entity and it's a thing that we can get going easily. And then from there, get the other one open, but still be working on them simultaneously.
That building's under construction, right?
All, all we did is get the groundwork, foundation stuff, which we had talked about previously. So, and how we handle that is if, let's say the IDA didn't approve the transfer, right? That this building and the refillery building has to be built anyway. So we always just get the foundation because going into the winter, try to get that done and then we just let it sit. It's just tough in New York, this year not so much, but it's typically tough in January, February to be dealing with the ground. So that's kind of how we've done that.
What's the red lines?
Owner. So this is the common and this is the break. So the, the question of when the turnover is, is really good because what this, and what we anticipate doing is this piece will be all sealed at one time and this will be sealed secondly, because this bit up is much more extensive, it'll take longer. So we can get this, get them open here in the first enterprise and then here maybe a little after, if it trails a month or two or three.
So the bottom floor is how many square feet? I see a couple of different.
The bottom floor is, it's just about 40, it's call it 4,100 square feet, it's just a little over 4,000 square feet.
Now, is this going to be separate entities running each business?
These are separate companies, not on the real estate application while we're here. This is one entity that is here in front of you for approval. But the actual tenant, which happens to be them also, right? We love that parity of landlord, because that's what's going to give Eastdale and town of Poughkeepsie that stability over the years. And there, they'll have two separate tenants, one will be Bunz and one will be Barboo.
Right. And the apartments, what's the timeframe on the apartments to be available?
They'll be done with the first CO2. See, the tricky thing with the apartments is, is you can't rent apartments without having full life safety underneath, completely finished. So that means drywall tape typically, it doesn't have to be primed, but with primer, you know, smoke detectors, fire detectors, CO2, pulse stations, exit lights, all that's working sprinkler system. So this can, this bar can be getting built, it's all custom while somebody's living upstairs over that, you know, 30, 60, 90 day overlap.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, so again, just as Sarah mentioned in the first one, this is a reallocation of benefits that we previously approved for the entire project. And so somebody be willing to make a motion to approve the final resolution for this project?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Jamie, could I get a second?
One second.
Thank you Kathy. Jasmine, could you please take a vote on that?
Approved.
Amy Von Deere.
Approved.
Kathy Bauer. Approved.
Approved. So Ryan and Sean, good luck.
It's going to be exciting. Great, always, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to seeing the finished. Go away. Before I see you there.
I lost my assistant.
Johnny's in Florida. Thank you. Thank you very much folks, appreciate your time.
Yes. Oh, it's, we, oh, there we go. Or Meg, next door to where Meg should be, Dia is back there. Okay. I'm very excited. My sound is very good.
You done?
Yeah, she's getting there now.
Jean, if you could pull up the PowerPoint, please?
We have them. We're just waiting for Don Sagrano to come back in.
Oh boy, that's going to not be awesome. Yes, she's so run the show. Yeah. Jean, if you hit the little screen icon in the bottom right?
We also want, I just wanted to comment also that Al Correia is not here, but he is attending via Zoom, just so everybody knows that. Okay, so next on the agenda is Malane from Duchess Tourism, and she's going to give us some information about performance outcomes.
Yeah, it was a good year. Jean, can you hit the screen icon on the bottom right to start the PowerPoint? So the show runs in a bigger screen format? Mary? Well, I can start by telling you that, um, in twenty twenty-one, because we get our numbers, we, that's the most recent data we have from, uh, Oxford Economics and Tourism Economics. A visitor to Duchess County spent six hundred and thirty-two million dollars. And that brought us back to almost ninety-four percent of our pre-pandemic record high. So that was great news for us.
Two thousand twenty-one and.
Correct.
So that was still with some.
Yes.
Effects of COVID.
Absolutely, without a doubt. And so, um, Duchess County outperformed, uh, the region as a whole and the state as a whole, though our recovery was much stronger. And next slide, go ahead, go to the next slide. Get my notes here. I don't know if there's a way to do it without the notes due here. So I don't know what that little screen is in the middle with the red text over my nice train photo, uh, but that's okay. Uh, this is a number you don't have memorized. Oh, go back one if you would. Thank you. Uh, and I can print this out. Larger for everyone or this email at the PDF to you all. Um, state and local taxes collected top eighty-seven million dollars. Um, so that money gets reinvested in all the things that, that residents want. So it is the, the visitor economy supporting our local residents. Um, supported nine thousand eleven jobs and with a combined income of three hundred and fifty, almost three hundred and sixty million dollars that again gets spent on groceries and lodging and clothing and insurance and everything else that our economy needs to, to push forward. If residents had to replace that amount of um, net new money coming into our county, it would cost each household an additional seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. So that's significant. Next slide, please. This is a gorgeous chart that we have of our visitor spending, uh, since twenty-ten. You can see it goes up, 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 falls off a cliff and that we're almost back to where we were. Next slide, please. This is the breakdown of visitor spending, food and beverage, number one. Um, people are going to love eating at Eastdale and everywhere else in the county, uh, lodging, number two, followed by transportation, retail, shopping and recreation. Next slide. So for a more current number, this is the county bed tax collection. So this is twenty twenty-two numbers that we have here. And again, even probably from the back of the room, you can see that trajectory continuing to go up, 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 up. And so, um, twenty twenty is where it downfall last year rebounded bigger than ever. Um, there is still, uh, an estimated four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars outstanding that needs to be collected. If all of that is collected, we're going to top the four million dollar mark, which is another record broken.
Question, are you able to, I, I know there's always been an issue with like Airbnb and people like that. Not always those people, not always forwarding taxes. Is that become more easily collectible?
So the county uses a system to, to help identify and collect those. It's an equivalent fee that they pay. We can't call it a tax. It's a, it's an equivalent four percent fee to what people pay at hotels and B and Bs. Um, there is some legislation, um, on the state level now that we're advocating for to hold Airbnb and other short-term rental companies more accountable, uh, that they would definitely have to register with each municipality or with the state if the municipality wasn't already collecting it, Duchess is. Um, so we'll see where that goes, uh, because we don't have any real true way of knowing if we're getting all that we're supposed to get. And that's, that's an issue state why, which is why we're pushing for this legislation. In addition to the health and safety, um, features that it requires of Airbnbs, uh, to put them on a more level playing field with B and B to make sure there's smoke detectors and exits and, um, you know, that kind of important things that protect our visitors. So, uh, okay, next slide. So tiny type, the bottom line is we've been able to use IDA funding to continue to build our asset library, which we share um, with the Duchess and the county and we provide to travel writers and a tour operators and journalists and we use in our, all our, our media, our digital or print media um, anywhere and everywhere. So this year we did a shoot in the spring, which was a season that we didn't have and we added uh, probably thirty more locations, uh, in addition to showcasing, uh, families and a, a diversity of people and, and including people who have disabilities, maybe very conscientious effort to include them in the photo shoot. So there are still photos of high-definition video, VR video and drone video. In twenty twenty-two, we published twenty-three videos on our YouTube channel. And, uh, if you know anything about marketing, advertising and social media, video is key. And it just out conforms everything else. Next slide, please. These are a sample of some of our, they have very little print. There's always a digital component that comes with it. Uh, but there's a few of those. And again, we'll make sure to share this with you after the fact. Next slide. These are some of our digital displays, which you also can't see, uh, but the top right one focuses on our promoting our craft beverage finder, which you have a, a coaster for that has the QR code that sends people through that page to highlight our craft beverage producers. We'll talk more about that in a little bit. Bottom right shows some of those, um, people with disabilities and, and diverseness in there and a campaign ad that we did called One County for All Stories, building on our story to experience tagline. Um, the center one you can't see is the vending machine highlighting all the four digital experience passes. And then the left side, we use this year, uh, New York Times Digital, they have, uh, what's called an XL Flex ad, which we had great results with and it combines video with a static ad. And so our, this one here, uh, which features a gentleman in a wheelchair at the FBR Library and then a lot of others throughout the video, different kinds of, um, folks doing different activities in the county. But this one outperformed the benchmark by three times as much. So we had great results from that campaign. Um, one of the things in your package, you do have our outcome sheet. Um, right now it's showing eighty-six thousand plus click throughs from our digital ads. We got more numbers in last night and we have hit our goal. We're at a hundred and sixteen thousand plus now on that with that link reporting that just came in. Uh, next slide, please. During our avid tourism efforts, that craft beverage pass highlights eight different farm beverage producers, whether it's cideries, wineries, um, distilleries that are on farm properties and using uh, ingredients grown on their farm. And then there's some other ones that also partner with local farms. For instance, standings point distillery uses Meadowbrook Farms apples for their apple brandy. So we highlight those there. Uh, the top rate is a, a video we produced called Meet the Makers and it features, um, those folks, um, doing what they do best for the, for the best of art tasting. And then, uh, the right side, you can't really see it here, but it's a screen that shows what that digital pass looks like. There's four passes total. In addition to the craft beverage, we highlight farms on our family connection finder pass, uh, Lilymore Alpaca Farm and Cloverbrook Farm where people can go walk alpacas and llamas and have other experiences with animals. It's a lot of fun. Um, and then the Zen Finder Pass, which is about trails and getting people away from the over used trails to promote sustainability and some of our farms have trails. So they are listed on that apps. Next slide, please. Our international marketing, this is going to be a really close one. There's a lot of text and I don't know this as well as the other stuff. Um, but, oh, in terms of, uh, internet travel to our county uh, before twenty nineteen, uh, or international travel, not internet, before I read the word. Eyes, it's early, more coffee. Okay. Before twenty nineteen, Duchess was a lesser known region among international travel operators. But thanks to IDA funding, we've been able to build that name recognition and, um, familiarity with our assets. So now that all the major tour operators internationally that are selling the United States have at least one Duchess itinerary in their portfolio. So that's great news. Um, in twenty twenty-two, we attended three virtual and seven internationally focused travel and trade shows and sales missions meeting with representatives from sixteen different countries. Uh, we primarily focused on Europe. This year Australia hasn't, they opened very late. Uh, but we did host a fan with New Zealand Airlines, bringing people here, tour operators taking them around. Um, we did not hit our goal for international, uh, web visits and that's entirely attributable to the decrease in visitation from people from Australia. It's, it's more, that's beyond. So we overachieved if you look at everything else. Um, we met with a hundred and sixty-four tour operators, we trained two hundred and fifty-eight sales agents. We pitched to twenty-one journalist, two hundred and twenty-one journalists and hosted nine fan tours in Duchess County where we brought them around and showcased our attractions. Next slide, please. So this gives you a little bit more information. We did nine paid marketing campaigns in European markets with vetted um, tour operators that you're the best of, the best that we felt had the, the customer base that would respond to, to travel to Duchess County. Uh, we know from, um, evidence and talking to partners that, uh, people who are, are looking for European travelers and especially Swiss travelers, um, they come multiple times, two, three, four times. So they've done the city, they're looking for something else and we are that perfect something else for them. Uh, we also did five promotional campaigns with a number of publications. Uh, but the, the case study here that I wanted to highlight is we did a two and a half month campaign with Canusa in Germany. And with that, there was over two hundred and twenty-six thousand reach on Facebook. Um, more on Instagram, the results, there were four hundred and eight inquiries with two hundred and seventy-eight room nights sold. So because Europeans use tour operators and we have packages that they can sell and any of our hotels around ATI or tour mappers can be listed for those agents to buy and package. So we can get some results. So we know that two hundred and seventy-eight room nights were sold. If you use an average of a hundred and fifty-nine dollars a night, which is probably low, um, that results in more than forty-four thousand dollars in spending for our thirty-five hundred dollar campaign investment. And that doesn't even include spending on meals or attractions or shopping. So we feel that's a really good deal and, and the work that we're doing internationally with those tour operators. Next slide, please. This, these are some photos of, of us out doing our thing internationally, training those agents, meeting with those tour operators, presenting in front of um, media and other folks on, on big stages, um, including the, the, uh, road show that we did, that we tried to show you the video for last meeting. I'll make, I'll put a link in this one I sent it to so you can watch it. Um, and, uh, is a member of Visit USA in the, in the different countries that allows us access to these tour operators and meetings with them. Um, and access to, we get to put articles at, at no additional cost in their newsletters that hit twenty thousand tour operators. So that continues to improve that name recognition and bring people here. Next slide. Talking about Artsman Hudson, because a hundred thousand dollars of our IDA funding goes to them to, to promote some of their programs. One of those is the Partners in the Arts Program. That's a grant program that people apply for. A couple of the highlights, La Well-Aweitsa, Jasna Valley, Beatrix Fran Garden Association, the Northern Duchess Symphony Orchestra and Center Class. Um, those programs supported fifty events across those larger ones and then others, um, which had over thirty thousand attendees. Um, Center Class, they estimate seven thousand, we're at Well-Aweitsa, sixty-five hundred people at. A lot of those forty-four percent are from outside of the county. So other folks coming in from, from near and far to enjoy um, the events and attractions that people put on here. These are all nonprofits. They would not be able to do what they do without the support of this funding. Next slide, please. Some of the other events that, uh, programs that Artsman Hudson does, uh, they have the arts and community action meetings that are weekly in Poughkeepsie and, and folks come together to collaborate and share information and, and plan events. Um, they, the Folk Arts Program hosted eleven virtual and in-person events with seventy-six hundred attendees. Uh, Hudson Valley Gospel Fest, Dia de los Muertos, um, are a part of that program as well. Um, one of the exciting things they've been doing is it's the ni- been the ninth annual Duchess handmade pop-up shop. They've been partnering the last couple of years with the Trolley Barn to that larger space. We have more than fifty artists and crafts people there participating. And this year they earned over eleven thousand dollars, which is a nine percent increase over the past year from that. Um, one of the amazing things that, that their team did is they were able to bring, uh, let me get his name right. I see his face in my head. Uh, John Elliott from CBS, uh, from New York City and broadcast there all day long. So they were cutting in and out all morning along on their morning show, highlighting, uh, Poughkeepsie, talking to the artists, uh, encouraging people to come, which is amazing publicity. So that was really exciting. Uh, Milberg Dinger does their Art in the Loft program. They continue with that. They had sixty-three entries for their wine label competition. They chose fourteen that more than three thousand people voted on and they have a ceremony. And then that, that winner gets put on, really who puts put on the bottles, which I think is a really fun, cool program. Um, and then the, the Duchess County poet laureate, um, not only doing a lot of collaboration work in different groups around the community and seminars and workshops, but also, uh, getting published and then meeting with international media to promote the work and the county and, and, uh, Poughkeepsie and Duchess. Next slide, please. Lastly, we want to talk about the Hudson Valley Film Commission. They had a record year region wide of more than sixty-three million dollars in direct spending that they could track. There's more that they can't track that's happening here. Duchess had about a twelve, more than twelve million set here locally. Um, twenty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-three room nights were had. That's the largest of any area in the region. Um, they like those fishtail hotels because they like to film at Umbra. And that's a studio in Newburgh that they can shoot in all year long. Um, that's where the whale filmed. They didn't film in any other locations other than that studio and I think one place in Ulster County. Uh, but they all stayed here in Duchess County. So thank you for your roommates. Um, a hundred and three production days, a hundred and forty scouting days, fifty-one locations used throughout the county. More than a thousand local actors and extras were hired by these productions and a hundred and eight, ninety-eight local crew members have worked here in the Hudson Valley instead of having to commute to New York City. So that's very positive. Next slide, please. We're getting near the end, I promise. Uh, this is a list of some of the, the projects that were worked on here. Some of the bigger name, uh, ones were Poker Face, which you're seeing all over the place now. On Peacock is getting a lot of great buzz. Um, The Sex Lives of College Girls did a little filming here, not to the level that they filmed the year before, which was disappointing. But we're glad to have them back and, and expect them to come and do a little bit more here in twenty twenty-three. Uh, The Three Women. Um, I can't read all this. This is, oh, the Holiday Spectacular Hallmark Loves Us. We are a great Hallmark destination. Uh, the column on the right shows some of those things that were filmed last year that you can see now and where they're coming out like White House Plumbers and Life in Beth and some of those other major productions. So that continues to provide buzz for us. Next slide, please. And speaking of buzz, I just want to conclude. I don't know if any of you saw this. Uh, but movie maker named the Hudson Valley region one of the top ten places to live in the United States for filmmakers. They don't, they say they don't, um, rate counties or regions. They do cities and the cities of Poughkeepsie, Newburgh, and Kinston tied for the tenth spot. So, you know, when you're talking about Palm Springs and some other places that get in there, um, it's kind of a big deal and, oh, it's really tiny. I'm gonna I'm not going to embarrass myself, but there's some really good quotes from the article that you can read, uh, talking about what a, a great place this is to live and to work. So that's exciting news and that's what we want. So that's the conclusion of my presentation. Any questions? There's the giant binder and hopefully if you would like to look through and see some of those, uh, digital and print ads and other things that we did. Uh, some of those campaign things we did earlier, actually, it's all in there.
Fantastic. Anybody have questions?
We agreed to.
As always, a great presentation, very thorough.
Thanks. I'll, I'll share that presentation with everyone.
All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. We're going to do the work we do without you.
Oh. Great. Okay, um.
Really, um, the next item on the agenda is the IDA and LDC performance outcomes. And I would ask to actually defer it to the next meeting because I Really, um, the next item on the agenda is the IDA and LBC performance outcomes, and I would ask to actually defer it to the next meeting because I. Last night I was reviewing this and I realized that you were sent, uh, the older version of this.
Okay, so, um, then the next item here is consideration approval of resolution authorizing you. Uh, to enter for the IDA to enter an agreement with, um, the LBC for professional services. Do you want to talk about?
So, yeah, so, um, I will leave it up to the board to decide whether they want to approve the execution of the contract at the next meeting. Typically we do it when I present the fourth quarter.
Okay, I think that would be better. All right. Um. Okay, so if that, that, is there anything else that you've talked about in the IDA meeting?
So one thing I would like the board to consider, we can send out a doodle survey, um, after the meeting. Is a, uh, rescheduling of the March IDA. Um, uh, an LBC meeting, uh, because of our audit. Uh, we are still, uh, our financial audit, we are still collecting supplemental information. And, um, looking at the calendar, we think it's going to be really tight to get a draft audit to the board in time for the March eighth meeting. So, uh, we'd like the board to perhaps consider a meeting the week after or the week, even the week after that.
And is it important that that be done in March?
Yes.
Timing of other things.
Yes, because, um, we are required by, to submit Paris at the end of March and the audit is part of that.
Okay.
As well as Paris, so.
All right, so you'll, you'll send out a doodle post.
If we can schedule it. And so I was thinking it either, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of the following week and the week after would be three days at eight AM.
Okay.
The sixth day, about six days.
All right, so the faster that you can get that out, the quicker we'll be able to, uh, figure out if we've got another timing. So what week will those be?
So it'll be, um, the, the third and fourth week, actually, of March. So I think you said you were away the fifteenth. So it would be the fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third.
And if the majority of people, if, you know, the weekend gone is better, uh, I'm confident Art could share the media necessary.
Probably won't be able to.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll see what we can find.
I'm wide open at the moment.
Okay.
All right, so we'll send out a doodle, see what we can do and then.
Okay, so at this point then I'd like to adjourn the, uh, IDA meeting.